No, we don't.
I'll bet you fifty dollars it'll pass any, any test you put it through.
Guess you didn't get the email.
I've got a phone number.
I wasn't on the board. I can't answer that question, nor was I the clerk.
If it's been going on that long, somebody could have called me.
So we have a motion on the floor.
The town has fired you multiple times. You don't answer the call, you won't take, they'll call back.
Ain't nobody called this phone right here from the town, from the town.
You have never answered any calls that I have ever placed from the town of Otter Creek's phone. You have never replied to any emails.
You obviously have got the wrong number then.
We're jumping back into the Otter Creek Town Hall meeting. It's a real-life garbage pail kids, but it's adults that behave like kids. And our new mayor, Madam Mayor Therese, just put Russ the Sus in his place. As a matter of fact, we're gonna revisit that as she goes through everything that he did wrong and why she's giving him the one-year term. And you're gonna see, he's not happy about it. But this isn't the only thing that gets out of control. Then we get to water. And where's Attorney Warm?
We still have the one-year term for the council member. And unfortunately, the previous administration should have included this on the ballot during elections, and they did not. Now it's left for me to handle. And in order to avoid a possible conflict of the board voting and there being no precedent for this situation, a call was put into the Attorney General. I have not heard back from them saying that I could not appoint someone. So after much review of the situation, I will be appointing the one-year term to Russell Meeks. And some of the reasons for this decision will include the failure to complete audits, the failure to do last year's trim, the failure to complete FDOT's request in March, failure to sign for DEP permits in May, failure to ensure public records requests were handled to avoid a lawsuit, shutting down the town hall when the clerk quit. Most of these failures came with fines and/or penalties of not receiving revenues and not being able to apply for grants. The mayor's the clerk's supervisor, and it's the mayor's responsibility to make sure things are getting done and getting done on time. I constantly am receiving calls that the ball has been dropped on yet another thing, yet another thing. It is also the mayor's responsibility to hand over all the knowledge and exhibit cooperation to the next mayor, which was not done. Everyone on the board should be here for the best interests of this town and for the people in the town. It is also the boards and especially the mayor's responsibility to make sure the town's money is being spent properly. And all I've seen since I got on the board is a mismanagement of money, people, and resources. It looks like the town was being set up for sabotage, bankruptcy, and all-around failure. And for these reasons, I stand by my decision.
Why don't you wait on the opinion from the Attorney General of the state of Florida?
That is just an opinion.
Wait till you get an opinion from them before you do this.
I have received nothing saying that I could not appoint it.
You don't have that authority.
You don't have that authority.
I have received nothing. I received nothing.
Should we talking about elected officials here? We're not talking about town employees.
Russell is now receiving the consequences from his own incompetence. It was Russell that should have put on the ballot, "You're voting one person for one year in this one seat." And he didn't. One of his many failures that our mayor just listed. And that is an incomplete list by far. And now he wants to claim that Madam Mayor Therese doesn't have the authority. And yet, when he was mayor, he seemed to think he had the authority to do anything at any point in time to anyone! He would spend money like it didn't even exist because we could just make it up anywhere, do anything. We've had witch hunts. We've got 6,000 emails of incriminating evidence that I can't wait to get my hands on, and I know you want to see as well. So when Russ the Sus is mayor, he can do anything he wants. He has all authority. But when Madam Mayor Therese is mayor, you don't got the authority to do that. Why don't you wait for the opinion? You know what an opinion is? Simply that. It's opinion. Guess what Russ just gave? An opinion. And guess what Madam Mayor Therese did? Ignore it like she should have.
Now we're moving on to new business. And the first thing we have to talk about is hiring the bookkeeper clerk. We did go through the resumes and we had an interview with Belinda Standridge for the bookkeeper clerk. And whoever attended the workshops went through those. So now we need to make a vote on hiring Belinda Standridge to do the bookkeeper clerk job.
Make a motion that we hire Belinda as a bookkeeper.
All in favor of hiring Belinda for the bookkeeper clerk?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, that's unanimous. Welcome, Belinda. Welcome.
Congratulations, Belinda. Oh my, that clerk position where Mary Mary Mail is scary, she had to call the Leaning County Sheriff to come and even open her mail, held for, I believe, roughly three years. Now, I don't know exact start time or end time. Well, actually, I do know her end time. But even then, that's up for debate because Russ said that she actually resigned, but then we found her coming into town hall. She was filmed live in town hall, closing the curtains, but she wasn't even supposed to be still an employee. We don't know her start date, but we do know Mail is scary for her. She had called Leaning County Sheriff. And you can see all of that in our Otter Creek playlist. It's right here on the channel. You can see all of the corruption unveiled here on the channel. And so that position, she pushes me out of the town hall office, which that's what it is. Town hall is the office inside the library building. And then she resigns, okay? Now, Russell shuts down town hall for two months, and nothing is going on. No bills are being paid. Nothing is happening whatsoever. But then, you got Madam Mayor Therese. She's voted in. She's our new mayor, and we have an interim. We have an interim temporary clerk, and that's Deanna. And so Deanna fills in, but then Belinda says, "Hey, I'll volunteer and help as well." Well, last month's meeting, the actual council said, "Hey, let's pay Belinda, and then let's pay Therese as well," as they're getting all of this mess that Russell and Mary created. They're fixing it. Well, since Belinda's being paid and Madam Mayor Therese is being paid for these things, Deanna says, "Alright, interim is done. I'm out." So now, we have an official clerk for one half of the position, and that's Belinda. And Belinda is a beautiful individual. She and her husband Doug have been in the area for almost 30 years now, I believe. And so they have a deep, rich history and understanding of Otter Creek. And Belinda has a professional resume that blows my own out of the water. And she's such a sweetheart. And here's the thing about her. She's such a sweetheart, but you can't get one over on her. Like, you know who she reminds me of?
Who? Who does she remind you of?
You can be such a sweetheart, and then at the same time, you can throw bricks at me and...
I'm a Sour Patch Kid.
Okay, so one moment you're sour, the next moment you're sweet?
Yeah. Alright, the next thing we need to talk about, because we have the audit in progress for 2022, and on our asset list, we have a 1976 Dodge fire truck. There's still a title and a tag that is in Otter Creek's name. And we're trying to find out what the status of that fire truck is for anybody who's been here long, sitting on the board, if they'd like to share some information, because we need to clear our assets when they do our audits.
You're all thinking, "I know where it is. It's parked over and over at Don the Con's." Nope, this is a different fire truck, believe it or not. So this is another area of failure, incompetency within the town. So you have a fire truck in the assets in your audit, which is not okay if you don't physically still have that fire truck. And what Madam Mayor is saying, "Listen, we got audits coming up. We have a fire truck that we don't even have possession of. Why do we still have it titled to us?" That's not okay. Now, Otter Creek is very heavy on assets and very light on actual physical money. So assets, you've got town hall building, you got a pavilion next to it, a garage. You've got the park property behind it. You've got a median in front of the church.
Water plant?
All water plants. You got two water plants. So you can see that the town is actually heavy on assets. Now, money-wise, they can't generate enough income to pay their expenses. So should they sell some assets? Yep, you absolutely should. But you've got unclean books, if you have a fire truck on it, that you don't actually physically possess anymore.
Whether we are in possession of this truck, what happened to the truck, so we can update the status. So is there anybody here that would like to offer any information about that?
I'm pretty sure the fire truck was auctioned off.
Do you know when? Because we do have to clear it off our assets.
It was prior to 2013.
Do you know if it was sold privately, who bought it?
It was auctioned off.
Do you know who bought it?
Frank Watson bought it.
Frank Watson? Because we just need to clear that. It's listed as in...
Darling, there's two trucks. There's two trucks.
We just have to update our assets, and right now, that's listed as one of our assets because we have an active title and tag on it. So I appreciate that information. The next thing we need to do is set up our budget workshop.
Ah, workshops. The thing that Russ the Sus doesn't show up for, neither does Don the Con. Russ the Sus has all kinds of time to creep around the town. And yes, he has officially started creeping all over the town again in his vehicles. Not okay. It is extremely alarming, especially if there are young ladies or if there are children in the area. And what concerns me most is he continues to go by the Christian school. But he can't show up for a workshop. How many workshops has he attended since the workshops have been open to the council? The answer is zero. None. Now, how many times has Don attended a workshop? The answer is zero. Although, there was a special meeting called last month because they had to get their trim amount in because they had a deadline. And then they were given a preliminary budget. And then Don went off, "We haven't even talked about this. I have no input." And it goes on and on and on. And here's the workshop that they're going to have to actually talk about it and have input. The question is, do you truly think Don the Con is gonna show up? I don't know. What if his invite comes through email? "Oh, by the way, Russ the Sus, I don't do email." Why do you have an email address if you don't do email?
So, I don't know. You have a work schedule. When would be good for you to do?
Just go ahead and set it, and I'll be here.
Okay.
Do it at night.
Do what? At seven o'clock at night?
Do it at night.
Right. Well, I just want to know when everybody has an open schedule.
Yeah, that's fine.
So any evening is fine with everyone at seven o'clock? You want to do it?
Yes, that's the usual way.
Okay. Just want to make sure everybody's good. Alright, and then as far as the brush truck goes, we've been talking to several different cities about that, and we're still talking with them, so there's no new thing to report on that. So hopefully, by the next meeting, we'll have more information, and we can make a vote so that we can sell that. Does anybody have anything to report with Parks and Rec, Public Safety, Water, Maintenance, Administration?
Water.
Water?
Can you hear me?
Strap in tight, because we going for a ride. Things are about to get out of control.
Kiss it.
Yeah, kiss it. The best thing to do with the microphone is kiss it. That's not a joke.
Okay, on the water plant, number one over here off of 24. We are, we talked about the pumps last month, getting them repaired and replaced back in line. But the expenses of those guys are changing day to day. They, yeah, one day they're telling me it's no cost, the next day they're telling me it's $3,500 cost. And then there's, then there's the $1,500 a piece to repair the motors. We've taken one motor to another place for an estimate to get them fixed there. But the bottom hand is that, or the bottom line is, is that the expense that's going to take to put these guys back in line is more than it would take, or the same kind of money as it would take to upgrade our filter system and to eliminate the one that's failing over here weekly on, on the iron and the sediment tanks.
Here's what Vice Mayor Zim is saying. It's actually less expensive, or around the same cost, to get all brand-new and to fix some failing filters, which by the way, George and I are gonna do a water test. You're gonna see Otter Creek water here in just a moment compared to normal clean water. He's saying it'd be cheaper, or the same exact cost, to actually get all brand-new than to put in used. And right now, you're going, "No, that can't be." Well, of course it can. George, remember when we bought Ramsey's 2.0? It was actually cheaper for George and I to custom order Ramsey's 2.0.
At the time and the market, it was less expensive to order a custom-made truck versus buying pre-owned. It was wild. It was so crazy.
So I took George into the dealer, and she told the, she told the salesman, "I want this, this, this." This is literally, George picked everything she wanted on Ramsey's 2.0. And it was cheaper to buy brand-new than it would have been used. And the same situation exists here. You're gonna have that same amount of expense go brand-new and do it right instead of continuing to fail because it's been done wrong so many times.
And put an iron filter in place, and then ahead of the test pilot one over there, we'll upgrade our water quality for the same kind of money as replacing the motors and rebuilding all the plumbing and all, redoing all the setup. And also, we're gonna have to update the control portion of the pressure of the supply side to the filters. Right now, it's unregulated, and it turns out to be the scene of the source of the problem of the motors. But, um, um... You know, motor costs and repairs are still in that range of $8,500 bucks. There is two service fees that go with that in addition. There's the different numbers we've gotten from upgrading the system for the pressure control stuff is about $10,000. Then we still have to replumb all the routing of the water lines to and from the system. The whole thing's about $20,000, plus we're looking at two numbers for, two different plumbers for the price and installation of it. Which is almost exact numbers it's going to take to go back and do it the way we burn up two motors or three motors already.
This money is not coming out of the residents' pockets. Because earlier in this meeting, we found out we got a $600,000 grant that specified towards water. The only thing it can be used for is our water. It has to be spent on our water. So you're not getting additional taxes to the residents to pay for these upgrades. The money is already there. The government has given it. It can only be used for one thing. It cannot be used for anything else. So when we're talking about $20,000, it's there. It's sitting. It's waiting. It can only be used for this type of situation.
It eliminates all the issues with the motors. We're using the well. We don't need the motors anymore or doing this. But by eliminating the motors, we can sell the two motors after we get them repaired, that recuperates some of the money back for the costs of moving forward in a positive direction. So some of this money, we will get back. How much, we don't know. The motors are $5,000 a piece or thereabouts. They're going to be considered used, but they'll be rebuilt, and they'll be close to that. I mean, we gotta do something with them. We can't let them just sit there and I, and I just disrupt. They're no value to no one broken. Nobody's gonna buy a busted motor at any value. So that is what I'm putting forward, that we step forward in that direction.
Do you have a backup motor? A backup pump?
For the...
For the water system?
Well, they had two of them, and both of them are blowed up.
Okay, so you still need a backup pump in case something goes wrong again, right?
We have two wells, and they both, we pressure-tested both wells. And both wells will produce 70 PSI and hold it. And so both wells will be hooked into the new system, and this is how we're eliminating all the new pumps, all these high-powered pumps that, you know, which are way overkill. By eliminating them, using our two wells, that'll run through all the cycle of filter systems and everything, and transfer it right on over here to, to our second plant and stage it for, for use. It has, um... It has, um, the water treatment stuff, the chemicals that we're using. Most, all of those will be eliminated through the system. So we're gonna save money also monthly on buying all these chemicals. And some of these chemicals are pretty nasty that we're using in our water just to control the contaminants that we're getting out of the water. That's because our system that we have currently can't get it out. These new systems do get it out, and they don't require all these chemicals.
Thank you.
You're gonna see a side-by-side comparison, Otter Creek water and normal clean water. It's coming. I'm gonna show you. But I want to clarify something in regards to what Zim is saying. He's saying newer systems can actually clean it up. Do we want clean water in Otter Creek? Hails, yes. Who doesn't want clean water? And we've already been through the actual plants, the water plants. So a couple meetings ago, we were invited. The community was invited. Guess who didn't show? Not Don the Con. It was me and a couple other people. That was it. And we went and we looked at the water treatment plants. You can go back through the Otter Creek list and that playlist, and you can find out exactly, as he's talking, you can go, "Oh, I see it right there. Oh, there it is right there." It all makes sense once you see it in person.
So is this what you're talking about?
Yes, this is the filter system for the, um...
Who, who done the engineering on this?
Yeah. Who done voted on this? Who done made a motion? Who done come to the, to the meeting? Who done making films of it? Who done? Who did? Who did? Here's where we get out of control. George, who done gonna get out of control at this meeting?
The company that designs these things does the engineering on it.
And they're getting it approved through DEP? Because it'll have to be approved through DEP?
Yes, we will fall through with DEP on the permit, as you did not, which you made a really big scene about. And everything you did over there failed under your engineering. I really appreciate your questions and forethought into that.
Remember when Russell Dunn questioned the authority of the Madam Mayor? Well, now he Dunn questioned the authority of the Vice Mayor. And apparently, when he was mayor, he Dunn had the authority to do whatever he wanted. He didn't get the right permits. He didn't get the right engineering. But now he wants to utilize all of these issues towards the new administration, who's actually doing things right and not corrupt.
Well, I think we need assessments from the industry rather than just words from council.
I believe that's what he just said.
Oh, I hope that's what he said.
That is what he said.
I didn't hear it.
The, the permitting, they inspected.
Yeah, that was supposed to be done in May, and they've been trying to get in touch with people, and nobody has followed through with doing the permits for it. Yeah, another call I received this week.
May. Who was mayor in May? Who was ahead of this entire project for two years? Oh, wait, that was Russell. Another failure. Complete and total failure.
Well, okay, as long as we get the, the assessments and maybe have even have the the guy that takes care of our water plant give us some kind of input and assessment of the situation.
He certainly has, and he's a real...
I haven't heard of where.
Come to the workshops.
Come to the workshops. You can't have open-ended workshops.
Do we need to...
That has specific workshops.
And the fund, and the funding is...
You would know. They're illegal, coming from Russ the Sus. Not the man, the man-child who has broken more sunshine law in the past few months than probably anybody else combined in the state of Florida. Not only that, he's gotten the entire town. And yeah, it's only 100 people. And I get it. It's not, it's not a big town. But they're in a lawsuit for breaking the law, for not being legal, for doing illegal activity. And now he wants to say that workshops are illegal? No, they're completely and totally legal. And Don wants information? Come to the workshops. Well, you can't have open-ended workshops. They're telling you what day the workshops are. Show up. What else have you got to do? What are you doing at all, Don? What are you doing? Don, you jumping in Russ's truck? You going creeping on all the, all the kids in the town?
True. And the funding is, um, will be covered under some of the grant money that we have. So it's not coming out.
That's good news.
And again, some of the money that we already spent on the other motors, we will be able to go back when we sell the other motors.
Well, we know how that doesn't usually happen, but I hope so.
It does if you follow up.
Does anybody want to make a motion on this, moving forward this direction, or do I need to make a shot?
I think we should get more information.
Of course you should.
We don't have time for more information. You've had, all this has been on the table for months, and you've, and you've had...
Do I hear a motion that we go forward?
Clean, I'll make a motion that we go for the clean water process and changing the filters and updating the pumps and motors and getting our, our water treatment system back online. It's been offline now for months.
Okay, now what kind of dollars are we talking?
We're talking around...
I mean specifically, not...
It's the, the different fundings are, it's gonna be around $20,000, and it's probably gonna be another $5,000 for the plumber.
Probably?
Yep, might be a little less. We're hoping it's gonna be less. And the, um, the, the money that we can get back from the pumps should cover the cost of the plumber. And so therefore, now we're spending the same exact money as going back and doing, trying to fix everything that's broken now.
I just can't even understand the insanity of this argumentative conversation right now. Russ is the one who installed everything that has been broken again and again. And by the way, if you continue to do the same things, guess what you get? The same results. And you're not gonna bring in the people who caused the problems to actually fix the solution. It's generally another person. Now, Vice Mayor Zim is coming in and going, "We've got a solution." And what does Don want to do? He wants to argue. Is this a byproduct? Is this a consequence of actually drinking Otter Creek water? The residents of Otter Creek are not getting filtered clean water right now. Our health and our safety is at risk.
And what's the cost of not doing anything?
Another lawsuit.
Do I hear a second to move forward with having clean water?
In addition to which one?
Is there a second to go forward?
Now Don doesn't know that I'm suing the town of Otter Creek for withholding public documents? Because all of those documents, the illegal ordinance or resolution, the illegal charging, the theft of me, all of that was going to court. But we're still, now that Otter Creek has fixed that under new administration, I'm letting that go. But we're still in the process of, in a lawsuit, with me getting all of the information. And I will hold on to that information if Russell ever gets back into administration, Mary Mary ever shows back up, if Don, I have, I have up to 10 years to press charges. So now you're going, "Okay, well, Jeremy, is that you for the second lawsuit?" No. The town of Otter Creek is under contract with this pilot filtering program. And again, you can see that in a previous video, the walkthrough of the water treatment plants in Otter Creek. So for this program, they're bringing in a $100,000 filter system. And as such, Otter Creek has to put their water through the pilot filtering system so that they have results, so that they can take those results and then go sell their systems to more people. Right now, all the pumps are broke. Right now, nothing's being filtered. Right now, they're out of contract, and therefore, they're legally liable for the entirety of that system. Plus, any damages that company wants to seek as well. It will literally financially destroy the town.
I would like to see some drawings and get some more information on that.
Yes, spend $20,000 just because, you know, somebody wanted... We all want good water, and we have good water, despite what everybody says.
You're bypassing the filters. Why are you using the filters? You're drinking raw...
We're not here to argue what you got. We're here to have a committee meeting.
Okay, so this does mean that our permit with DEP to go forward with clean water will fall away. And we need this for our grants and whatnot. So do I hear a second to go forward with, going forward with having clean water and getting the filters and doing what's necessary? Or do we want to lose our funding?
You've applied for, for the permit for this?
They've been trying to get in touch with you to sign the permit since May.
The permit for this?
All of this is connected.
This will all fall under the same permit as an extension of the pilot program.
Will the pilot be a reputable?
If we don't fix and refute it, we're gonna actually, we're gonna lose the pilot program. We're gonna lose the permit itself. We're gonna lose the permit itself.
What's the value of it?
And then we're gonna be sued by the company who's signed up for the pilot program that has, nothing but the town has faltered and failed upon.
You want to know who got us in that pilot program? Uh, you're looking at him, Russ the Sus. And per the usual, he did not follow anything in the contract or agreement.
All you had to do was buy three pumps and put them in there, and the filter would be working.
You did it three times, Russell. All three of them busted.
There wasn't but two pumps.
And one of them's burned up twice, one of them burned up once.
Let me clearly state this one more time. Russell Meeks Senior is one of the most incompetent, ignorant individuals I have ever met in my life. The definition of insanity, doing the same thing over and over, and in this case, three times over again, and expecting a different result.
So, we're where we are now. Are we going to move forward, or are we not?
They were improperly installed. The company is not gonna do them under a warranty.
How long is our permit for? I mean, you know what I'm saying?
The pilot program is supposed to be ongoing. It has, has not had even a projected, uh, time of production. It's failed so many, it's failed so many times.
It was in service for two months before that last pump fell, and the, and the water was good and clear.
Here's what I find extremely ironic. I have multiple videos of Russell coming before Don and the rest of the board. And yes, Gail was there too, and saying, "I need $20,000 for the water system. I need $20,000 to refix these pumps. I need $20,000 again to refix these pumps." And guess what Don and Gail both did? They voted yea. They said, "Yep, take the money. Take it. Here, go do with it." It's all grant money. It's nothing out of their pocket. And yet, Russell here is claiming, out of these multiple times they spent $20,000, the things has only worked for two months. That's your return on your grant money investment with Russell as your leader. Two months of filtered water.
He's done what it was supposed to do. I don't have a problem with putting in another iron feller. But I want to talk, I want to talk to, uh, to Lonnie about it and talk Florida River Water and see where they're at with it.
Is that who you spoke with on your design of the last system?
The design on the last system was done by a professional pump installer that does it every day.
And who was that?
Nature Coast Utilities.
Nature Coast Utilities. So far, none, nobody's taking responsibility. They're all saying that this is done under the hands you told them to do.
You took over. It was up to you.
You're the one that blew them up.
So, can I ask? Are you wait, yeah. Are you waiting for him? You said people were waiting to hear from him or sign off on something?
Different things were not signed. There was a permit from DEP that was not signed. Every day, I get calls about stuff.
Nobody's asked me to sign a permit. Where's it at?
They've been, they've been contacting, they've been reaching out to us since, the town since April. I guess you didn't get the email.
I've got a phone number.
I wasn't on the board. I can't answer that question, nor was I the clerk.
If it's been going on that long, somebody could have called me.
So, we have a motion on the floor.
The town's called you multiple times. You don't answer the call, you won't take, no call back.
Ain't nobody called this phone right here from the town.
You have never answered any calls that I have ever placed from the town of Otter Creek's phone. You have never replied to any emails.
You obviously have got the wrong number then.
But it's whatever number they have on file for you in the office.
I'll bet you Lynette has the right number right there in his pocket, that old professional dancer. Oh, by the way, we also have the number of a professional self-proclaimed journalist. We're gonna be doing our own investigation with that number, and we'll make sure we get Russ's number too, because apparently, nobody has it. Side note about Lynette and John Crook, as they continue to post that the whole community supports them and they're friends with them, the whole community wants them out. There's not anybody in the community that is supporting them. Now, the only people who may be somewhat thankful that they're in the town of Otter Creek right now, Russ the Sus. Oh, maybe Mary Mary, who she claims to have a relationship with, which I guarantee you, Mary Mary would never speak a word to Lynette. And maybe Don the Con, because it takes the limelight off of them with all the insanity that Lynette and John Crook are doing.
So, we have a motion on the floor concerning the water. Is the motion falling, or is there a second to the motion?
Motion's supposed to be very specific. And that was a very unspecific motion.
It's grant money to pay for pumps.
It is a motion to move forward on the clean water system that we have inherited that is in, in major default.
To move forward.
So, they're gonna give you money?
They're giving us the money to do it and fix it.
If you just say yes.
If we just say yes.
And what, what do you have to give back?
Nothing, except we get clean water, and all the systems updated and brought to a modern state. It's all brought to, it's all brought into a self-controlled and operating on its own without having to be mandated through every step, because there's so many jury riggers that you have to have someone stand there over it every time it changes from one stage to the other. It becomes automatic through this new system. Everything controls itself, and it operates just like it's, all systems are supposed to and is designed to do, which our last system did not.
Is it about safety in Carolina's sense?
It's clean water.
Oh, safety?
Well, it's, it's clean water is a safety issue.
A yes or a no?
And we have clean water.
No, we don't.
No, we don't.
I'll bet you $50 it'll pass any, any test you put it through.
Okay, I'll take your 50. I'll take that bet. Now, like Albert Fuller, working for the town of Otter Creek, I've never worked for such a little amount of money. But he did say any test. So, George and I went ahead and we did a cleanliness test of the town of Otter Creek water. You be the judge. Does Don owe me 50 bucks or not? Here's two buckets. We use these buckets to fill up the back of the tank of our toilet. Now, this bucket is a little bit more stained from Otter Creek water. This one's a little bit more white. We're gonna go ahead and put filtered water from our house in the more stained water, and we're gonna put pure Otter Creek water in this bucket. And we're gonna find out, is pure Otter Creek water, is it actually clean? This is our $5,000 filter. This is our own personal filter that we go above and beyond and filter Otter Creek water with. It's from that filter at the other end, we're gonna fill this bucket with. All we get is hot water, because we actually have to cut the cold water line to prove to the town of Otter Creek that we did not have a busted line and rewound the line. They were stealing money from us with the water. So, this is filtered water. Again, going in the dirtier bucket. I'm just gonna go ahead and fill up this entire bucket with hot filtered water. This here is where my two-inch pipe becomes a one-inch pipe and goes down to a 5/8 inch pipe, and then hoses water unfiltered to the camper. So, none of this water in the camper is filtered. That's where I shower. Let's go see what that water looks like. Keep in mind, I'm giving the Otter Creek unfiltered water the cleaner bucket. This bucket is stained. So, here we go. Let's see what happens here. Now, very first thing that I notice, I've got all kinds of bubbles and suds, okay? Second thing I notice is a smell. There's definitely a, it's not sulfur. It's the chemicals they use to actually separate all the particles in the water. And, and it sits in the lines and in the water. It's not a healthy smell by any stretch of the imagination. All right, we're gonna fill this bucket on up. Look at all the sudding. Now, that's part of the chemicals that they're using to treat everything. As we have over here, this is trying to take all the chemicals out. Doesn't mean it's succeeding. Now, remember, this is the clean water. You can already see this water is darker than this water here, as I'm filling up in a clearer, cleaner bucket. That's what concerns me. This is unfiltered. This is through the house and filtered. See all the sudding, George? All right, all that sudding, that is from the chemicals used. And our filter's supposed to take all of those chemicals out. And this is the, this is the whiter. This is the cleaner bucket. And you see, what color is that? Green?
It's got a greenish tint to it, sure.
Tea-green, um, you know, I don't know exactly what color you would call it. But this is what concerns me. George uses this water for her because of her health issues. I use this water in the camper so that George has unlimited supply of this water in the hot water tank, because all we have is hot water. All right, let's compare now. Do you see the nastiness of the color of this water? This was the bright white bucket. This one was the stained bucket from Otter Creek water. This water's pretty downright nasty.
This has more of a brownish-green tint. This still has a tint, but it's clearer.
That's clearer, and it's in a stained bucket from this water. So, does Otter Creek have, uh, clean water? Now, that's clean water that you get at Walmart. Look at the coloration difference. You see that there? You see the coloration difference? As a matter of fact, I poured out our Otter Creek water that went through the filter. Let's fill this stained bucket up with real water that you buy from the store and see the color difference. Again, spending my hard-earned money to try and protect the residents, I'm putting bottled water into this so we can compare it to Otter Creek. Otter Creek water, right there. Look at this. Fresh water, right there. Otter Creek, you can see the difference, right, George? Otter Creek, fresh water. Yeah, Don, uh, I don't agree with you. We absolutely do not have clean water in Otter Creek.
All right, we're getting off point here.
They do the report.
We're getting off point here.
Yeah, we shared with him.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there going to be a second for the motion, or is it falling through?
The motion wasn't specific.
Okay, that's a no from Don. That's a no from me. Okay. All right, motion falls through, and we don't go forward with our water.
Yeah, this is extremely disappointing. But on the bright side, I'm going to the next meeting. I have to. Don owes me $50.
It's a $100,000 filter system that's being bypassed right now because the pumps have failed.
That company, they're, they're gonna stay, they will sue this town if you fail to comply with the system.
It's a free system. We gotta fix the pumps. It's free money to fix the pumps.
All right, so we're moving on?
No.
We're moving on? All right, now we're gonna move on to announcements. Can I have silence, please? Now, we're moving on to announcements. The children's food table, they're still coming every other Friday. They were here on the 4th. They'll be here on the 18th and on September 1st. Catholic Charities is no more coming, because they only had one or two people. In the future, if there's a need for it, they'll be more than happy to come back out.
Now, even the Catholic charities are turning their back on Otter Creek. Now, I say that somewhat in jest, but I say it in reality as well. Otter Creek has carried this horrible reputation for years and years and years under the administration of people such as Russ the Sus and Don the Con. It's time for a positive change. And here, we had the opportunity for positive change, and our townspeople are understandably upset.
And once again, people can sign up to email the water bills. It saves on postage, paper, ink, and you get it faster. And the Wacassasso Water and Wastewater Cooperative Meeting, the next one will be on August 16th at 1:00 PM in Cedar Key. Everybody's welcome to go from the public. We will also be running an ad in the paper to hire a new attorney. Mr. Worm submitted his 30-day resignation on August 4th.
Yeah! This is such incredible news for the town of Otter Creek. Attorney Worm, as Russell called him, has such a reputation in Levy County. Now, my lawyer has said, "Jeremy, this is what his reputation is and what he's known for." And this isn't a legal term, but he's a head. I can't repeat that. But you get the understanding of it. This is great news. Attorney Worm, otherwise, you know what? I'm surprised Lynette and John Crook didn't set up signs all over Otter Creek that said, "Get rid of the Florida rapist, Attorney Worm." Because really, that's what he was doing. He was rapisting the town of Otter Creek.
And now we're moving on to public comments.
Can I ask a question? I thought Otter Creek had an ordinance about shooting guns in Otter Creek, in the town, city. Russell, am I right or not?
There is an ordinance that says you can't fire, shoot a firearm in the city limits on any property less than an acre.
Less than acres.
Yeah, less than one acre.
Less than one acre, okay.
You have to have an approved backstop.
Even more than an acre.
You have to have what?
An approved backstop.
12-foot of dirt with six cross ties.
The town used to have an ordinance, the state passed a law, it is state statute now. You can look it up. I don't know what the number of it is, but it's state statute. And they had to do a lay with the town, because state overrides town.
State is always gonna override the town, just like county overrides the town. So, state, you can't legally live in a shed. Doesn't matter if you have carpet. And it doesn't matter if you refuse to show pictures of it, because we still have work to do. Doesn't matter if it has electric. Doesn't matter if it has an actual AC. That's the state statute. It's the law. So, Lynette, no, you cannot, especially with a three-year-old. Oh, by the way, county statutes, you can't be living in a camper under all of this time. By the way, there's different guidelines in regards to it. There are people that said, "Jeremy, you have a camper on your property." My property and my camper fall within the legal status of the statute. Hers does not. And this question is asked specifically because Gail is the neighbor right across the street who could have had a random bullet right at her. This question was also asked because we were told afterwards by a credible neighbor that John Crook and Lynette were shooting off firearms on Sunday, days before we arrived, because there's a vehicle that passed by that looks like Georgia's vehicle, a black Grand Cherokee. And therefore, out of intimidation, they were starting to shoot firearms yet again, aimed specifically toward George, and it wasn't even George. Why in the world has nobody done anything about these two?
All right. And did you have anything else, Gail? So, public comments, members of the public have three minutes to comment on any issues that have been discussed at this meeting. Was there anyone?
Uh, what are we doing about the dog catcher?
That is falling under the next budget. It's not in this budget yet.
No problem.
So, when we, it will be in the next budget.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fuller?
Just a brief meeting, uh, just a brief, uh, comment about public comment. Don was actually correct, is that all comments should be directed to the chair. And the reason being, it stops the arguments between audience people, because there has been a historical, uh, account of people fighting because of arguments between people. And so, it would be appropriate to say, "Let's direct all the comments to the chair, rather than to any individual in, in the, in the audience."
Thank you. Was there anybody else who had a comment?
I'd just like to thank you and Zim and Gail for, for your quality of serving the community and the things that you've brought to our attention today. I truly mean it. I, I love the town, and I love the majority of the people. Thank you for doing what you can for the town, and, and thank you for trying to better the town for the residents. I really mean that. Thank you, Gail. Thank you, Therese. Thank you, Zim.
What about Don and Russ?
Thank you for making me the easiest 50 bucks I've ever made in my life. You're both responsible for the horrible water in Otter Creek.
What about them?
Thank you.
What have y'all done to help?
Say that again?
What have you done to help?
What you'll ever realize.
Oh, well, please, the most...
What you don't realize.
I'm addressing the...
No, I got a public comment. He's been on this council for some 30 years off and on. His wife has been mayor. He never has. He hasn't accomplished anything. Nothing tangible have he could donated or given back to this town. All you do is milk it.
You make all these statements, and they're just not factual.
They are factual.
They are not factual.
They're factual.
Okay, thank you, everybody, for your comments. Yes, ma'am?
No, I'm not a part of your water. But I don't understand how you could turn down a grant like that, a big opportunity. Is there a way to, like, is there a deadline, deadline that you can discuss a little longer? Because that seems like a couple of years.
I'd like for you to put that on the agenda when we have that budget meeting, and let's address it again. address it again.
Tell me the workshop?
The workshop, yes.
It's a budget issue.
A grant. Can you adjust the grant?
We've already got the money. We got money for COVID Monday. It's in a special account. The only thing it can be spent on is water.
Is there any specific information you would like available at that so we can have it ready?
Uh, I want to talk to Lonnie and I want to talk to Florida Water and see what they say about this. Because they would be the ones that write up the permit.
Now see, that's helping if he follows through with that. That's helping the town. That's an example, Don. That's an example.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Does anybody else have any comments? I'd like to thank everybody for their commentary and for coming out. I heard a motion to adjourn. Was there a second?
Before is the motion adjourned. Well, what happened to a mid-tower? Do we have any idea why they didn't show tonight and what they supposed to give us say?
No, sir.
A rundown?
I do not know anything. I didn't hear anything.
But they were supposed to have been here.
Melissa Fox had said that they would be coming out, but I haven't been the one in communication, so I don't know anything more about that.
I'm just curious, you know, why they didn't show.
Okay. There's, anybody else?
I'd like vanilla ice cream. The ice cream's so short.
Dairy Queen is open.
Is it? It is, yes.
Yes. Did you have some?
Uh, that was it.
Okay, I heard a motion to adjourn.